Good evening. We're going to call for February 2022. Modern City Council's meeting order, if you'll stand and pledge allegiance, followed by a motion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Add your agenda before you, I believe there is one item that we're adding, which will be January 29 minutes of city budget meeting. Do I hear a motion to add to the agenda?
So.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight, Ms. Qua, and Ms. Dean. Approval of January 25th regulations, January 25th work session minutes, January 29 minutes for the city budget meeting. Add this before you, do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Your second. That's probably second, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Dean.
I hope, uh, Mr. Mayor, could we go on to discuss it, before we hold it?
Yes.
So there were several decisions were made during the budget meeting, and the agenda doesn't reflect any of that.
In terms of discussions, I don't think we did any votes, right?
We didn't take any vote, but we made the decision because the staff had written to us on the field terms that we would do again.
But if you said, as you already did, um, that wouldn't be necessary to say things about.
So that's who keep the transparency away from public, because public doesn't know how did we what discussion that we made, and that's the whole thing, whole purpose of all the meeting act, is that we have to announce that to public, and to have public, the public will plan to attend the meeting to see how we discussed that problem, or issue, or how to resolve the problem.
I think it was also taped, is that not correct?
I'm sorry?
You had a tape, a retake of either?
Record it, yes.
Recorded, and it's online?
Put it in the course now.
Put it online?
Okay.
Uh, we put it online. Other comments? Motion, properly seconded, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms., uh, Knight?
Aye.
And Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Uh, public here, related to the amendment, the zoning map, Mr. Mayor. Was the zoning map served? Yes. Just give us some other.
This is the, uh, as discussed earlier, this is the, uh, move by the board to change that zoning from back to a light industrial, looking busy, and the maps are attached on here to facilitate the sale of that property.
And ultimately, like before, the planning and zoning board, planning and zoning board.
Recommended that, yes.
Approved.
Those who know this would be the old Southern Vine Warehouse, and basically, it's kind
of 50,000 square foot warehouse, it's been on it for a long time, and we're just trying to get some partial use, anyone who knows how properties are valued, most properties are valued based on, um, income, right? So if it's leased, and somebody's making some money, usually that helps your property there. Is there any comments from the public? We'll open it up to a public hearing, any comments from the public to the old Southern Vine Warehouse? Not very excited, it's really clean, so the next, got a fire station behind it, which is also really clean, should have actually. Excellent. No other comments? We'll move forward. Words and presentations. We have one that is exceptionally rare to do, and I'm very pleased. Said, if Ms. Eloise Bell Isle would come forward, she is celebrating her 100th birthday. This is a proclamation to Ms. Eloise Chapman Bell Isle. Whereas Eloise Bell Isle, daughter of Otis Ashmore Chandler and Louise Breedlove Chandler, was born February 3rd, 1922, in Banks County, near Commerce, Georgia. She was the second of seven children. She met her future husband, William Austin Bell Senior, whom she married in 1945, while working in the Military Transportation Department at the Atlanta Army Depot. In 1949, the couple purchased property in Clayton County, spending two years building their home. William created the blueprints, Eloise mixed the cement and mortar, gosh, I'm like, literally by hand, they completed the house in 1951, and it is the loving home of Eloise today. Ms. Eloise Isle, uh, Bell Isle raised six children before she returned to full-time employment in 1973, working 14 years for the Continental Fiber Drum. In her retirement, Eloise spent time traveling throughout the United States and Europe. She also bowled for many years, traveling to many tournaments, and was a longtime member of the Mall Walkers at South Lake Mall. Always devoted to her volunteer efforts, she donated her time to numerous local organizations, including Spotty Hall, the Good Shepherd Clinic, Ecclestone Hospital, the Girl Scouts of America, and the Clayton Mental Health Center. She has chosen to remain and commit herself to our community for more than 70 years.
Wow.
Therefore, I, John Leffler, Mayor of the City of Mar, invite all citizens of Mar and Clayton County to congratulate and honor Ms. Isle. We acknowledge her 100th birthday and her many contributions to our community with the presentation of this proclamation and a key to the city. And that is a key to the city. I'm not sure it opens the front door.
Thank you.
Feel free to say something.
Thank you, this is just great, this just puts the icing on the cake. I had such a good time this weekend with family and friends, and it's been a journey to get this far up, and, uh, um, I got my calendar, and I just folded over sheet every day, my granddaughter made me a calendar last year, so I know how many days I had left before the end of the year. And, uh, so now I've got it back down, and I'm starting on my second one. But if I do, then well and good, and thank y'all for this, this is just great, and I do appreciate it.
That is so nice, thank you, ma'am. We, we are, we played the Clayton County presentation, um, for those who had a chance to see it, it's also available online, um, but again, we want to thank the members of the board, basically, Clayton County, Clayton County Commissioners, um, you know, it's a huge value to the City of Mar, it's a great place, um, to, to be able to take an abandoned seater's location, and, you know, and having any type of economic development around regional laws, especially older regional laws, is, is not easy. They, they take a tremendous amount of community effort to make that as, as an opportunity, and it's, it's really the first time outside of the, um, you know, the Jonesburg, where they built the jail for the justice, and we had to build it in that section. And this particular case, nobody had to build it here, you know, they had options on other properties throughout Clayton County, uh, they could have chose that, um, you know, we went up with Dr. Beasley, you know, he talked about, you know, economic development, what that does for retail sales, how that drives value for our children, in terms of education loss and things like that, where, you know, a, a potential other party, you know, might be able to spend money in another county. So to be able to spend those resources in this county, make an investment, you know, in Clayton County, but specifically the City of Mar, we are eternally grateful, and I think that number is at about 65 million, and we haven't even really started it. So we want to be able to show the video, but we'll have better plans in the next six months, and in the meantime, we'll also meet with some private partners, hopefully South Lake Mall, and see if we can even expand that vision a little bit further. But, uh, for all those who were instrumental in at least bringing this opportunity before us, uh, in making that decision, we sincerely appreciate that, and we're going to be able to.
Uh, I just wanted to tell students and stakeholders that the, um, the arena isn't graduation facility, but there additionally will be an extension of the career and technical, uh, programs and pathways for the school system, that will be housed in that space, as well as, um, a junior achievement, uh, location, there's a, they're gonna put a program there as well for our students that will serve, um, a lot of schools in the region, so the Junior Achievement Center, a business, I think it's BizTown, Junior Achievement BizTown, that will be in that property, um, a space for events for the school system will be in that property, as well as, as some of the pathways, so it's a very critical piece to the growth, uh, for the city, for the county, as well as economic development, for workforce development, so we're very excited.
It has a, a component for public safety, uh, they're, they're training firefighters, they're training, um, you know, young police officers before you send them to the academy, and while it's kind of nice, is, you know, that gives us a, a potential pitch that we can reach from, almost all of those students, if not all of those students are Clayton County residents, which means you might be able to have that firefighter who lives next door, um, and to really be able to kind of pull, you know, the, the various resources that should be able to operate your city right here in our backyard, um, and, you know, it takes years to, to learn the trade, it takes the, for the crack of the profession, but, you know, certainly at that entry level, to be able to pull from our own town, one of those, uh, including some others, so I have others who are young, I certainly think so, um, we, we do that, those that are involved in that, look forward to it. Uh, new business, anything, approval of the Finance Director's recommendation to approve the agreement with Bridge County Services to assist with the project management implementation train for new finance software at the amount of $50,000, as was 2014, and authorized to be executed, consulting, uh, documents. You had that before you, do I hear a motion to approve it?
Second.
Your second.
Second.
That's probably second, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor, can we open up and introduce this person?
Yes, ma'am.
So understanding that the project manager is, uh, will be helpful during the implementation, my concern, as I raised in the what's asked and earlier today, the way the contract written between the city and the Bridge County Services, first of all, the contract say, we will, the city will be charged per hour, but the rate of the, the rate per hour is not indicated in the contract. The contract also doesn't say how long, how many hours needed for this implementation, so it doesn't give, uh, us the cost of the project. It also, in the liability term, uh, in the contract, it also weigh the liability of the consulting service if, um, during the implementation, if, um, uh, something happened during the consulting service by the consultant, the contractor is not being held accountable for the service that they provided. So, to me, it doesn't protect the city in any way, um, we don't hope that bad thing to happen, but, uh, when we lose something, we own something to evaluate, to evaluate the risk, and if we completely waive the liability, the contractor is not held accountable for the work that they provided to the city, it's not good, uh, it's not the good way to, to spend the tax dollars, and that's been my concern on the, the concern about the agreement, and I would like to hear from my council members who are going to vote for this matter to my, uh, to hear, uh, your opinion on that, no concerns.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if we could ask Chris to come back on and provide the billable rate for the service you mentioned.
The billable rate is 125, it's under 25 an hour.
But the rates are not indicating the contract, as well as the time, how long the project is going to, how many hours this implementation needed, is not indicating the contract either.
I addressed most municipal members.
Sure.
Just in why the hourly rate cannot in that contract, that's, that's a blanket contract for their services, uh, and in addition to that, there is a task order, based on the type of work that's going to be done, uh, we would, we would agree upon the billing rate, and, uh, she would deal off of that task order, and she has told us in, in, in writing that it's 125 per hour. Now, as far as the cap on the number of hours, that's really incumbent on us, the city, to make sure that they, we stay within budgets, and that's my responsibility, city manager's responsibility, ultimately, house's responsibility, to make sure that this is not just a blank open-end contract, so it's up to us to make sure that we stay within our budget, and that we utilize her time wisely, like such as we're utilizing our dollars wisely. Now, we have set a limit as to what the maximum amount would be, uh, for this agreement, and that's the $50,000, uh, but if it comes in 15, 25, 30,000, and so forth, it's going to be based on the number of hours that we ask her to help us with these projects, uh, not the amount of time that she says it's going to take.
Other comments? Questions?
So do you think the way we weigh the liability and I'm going to read the words in the contract, liability to extend a lot of the law, the city agrees that the consultant shall not be liable for financial loss to the city of any time, indirect or consequential, which may cause direct, uh, indirect by time delay, inadequate deficiency associated with the consultant doing, the performance of consultant service, is that a good protection for the city when we completely waive the liability of the person who provided the service?
Well, I, I would say that we're not completely waiving our, our liability there, because the software provider has liability under their contract, so that the software performs as it's designed. What this contract is saying is that you're paying for my time, you're paying for my expertise, and she's not selling us a product or service that's being guaranteed of anything other than the work that she's going to be paid for, so if she doesn't give us the work that we've asked for, then we wouldn't pay her for her services, and it wouldn't be a liability to go above and beyond that, so, you know, no different than, like, like I said, this is almost identical to what we did with Mark Whitley and our construction projects there, uh, you know, he wouldn't be responsible for, you know, a bridge collapse or something like that, it would be the construction company who would be ultimately responsible for that work. His role is really just guiding and making sure that the project stays on path, and that the work's being completed at the time.
Other comments?
Just, just quickly, uh, so understanding that we're differentiating the scope of work between the vendor who's going to provide the services for the implementation of the software package, and we have a project manager through the scope of her work, which will be training, it'll be, um, you know, gap fill assistance from one system to another, it'll be training, it'll be, uh, providing us manuals, we have to understand there's a differentiation when you're saying liability, the liability is going to be with the vendor who's, who's providing, you know, the new platform for the software, for the finance system, so just kind of keep in mind differentiating the scope of work between the two, and what liability may be attached to the scope of work.
Yeah, the, the members are saying that she would not hold him accountable for the consultant performance, we not, I'm not concerned, my concern is not about the software itself, the software itself, the software will be holding accountable for that.
So you answered your own question.
My concern is that the members right here are saying that she will wait for the consult, the performance of consultant service as we have, so she not holding accountable for the result of her consulting service, is my concern.
Yeah, you, I mean, you potentially just answered your own question.
Other comments? Hearing none, motion has been properly seconded, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Mayor, the contract is not being written in the best interest of the city, I am not opposed to the project or the idea, it's just the contract is not being the best protection for spending the tax dollars.
I don't remember too, approval to pay difference from the awarded amount and the local maintenance and improvement grant to complete the road projects from 2021 and current year grant of 2022, this is the difference between what the grants are worth and ultimately what we got out of it from the city, which is 153,620 and 24 cents from Slosk 2020, and authorized to be executed, the agreement. Uh, now, it's going to basically be, uh, ours, um, or, or, a little bit for structures in, uh, 2020, um, and, uh, city manager, could you just try to read off those words again?
Sure. This would be catching up on 2021, which we already received a grant amount on, for Candlelight Court, Candlestick Court, Continental Circle, Kingston Road, Lamp Light Court, Oak Bridge Drive, and Trilite Trail, uh, 2022, uh, you put in for, just were awarded yesterday, are for Patricia Drive, South Cheryl Drive, Vivian Court, and Mural Drive.
Excellent. Do I hear a motion to, for?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion probably seconded, all those in favor say aye, Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
First reading of ordinance 23-3, and the zoning map, as you heard earlier, uh, this is just the first reading, we had a public hearing, just, just briefly, it is related to the old Southern Vine Warehouse, uh, it is, uh, was a form of life manufacturing use, uh, there, there's no reason, uh, the property next door was initially knocked down, and nobody's built up in the better part of 15 years, um, instead of trying to get our tax base back up to something reasonable, um, you know, we're, we're looking to a man is on there. General comments, because we're going to go into executive session to discuss the property lands that I mentioned earlier, uh, but now would be a good time, if anybody has any comments, um, and, uh, we, we thank our, our guest of 100 years, um, in terms of that. Comments from the office? Chair, Lana?
Go ahead.
Flip the coin.
Well, I just, I just wanted to, uh, uh, tell Chief how proud I was when I heard Channel 5 and, um, our former, um, step in, um, intro, [laugh] Moss, Jeff Moss on TV saying how they tracked down that individual that was injured, or, you know, hypothermia, and he was in the bushes, and they, because of his watch and the technology, they found him and, and they rescued him and saved his life, so, uh, you know, great work to y'all guys, okay?
Thank you. Chair?
When we spruced up this room and stuff, we took down a whole bunch of pictures of all the past mayors, I would like to see them rehunting, because that's part of our history, and I actually think there's enough room in this room that we could do that. Also, when we took all the stuff out of the tourist center, there was, uh, pictures of the plane crash that happened here in Mar a long time ago, which is another part of our history, uh, Riggenbacher crashed his plane, and he also started Eastern Airlines, and I'd like to see some of that stuff, I was told it was going to be put back up, but haven't seen any of it.
Thank you, the first person that's mentioned that in a long time.
We had it at, at the Veterans Day, remember, in the back, back there?
We'll put it on our, our, you got to figure out kind of how to do it, where to do it, um, you know, whether it's appropriate here, whether it's over, over somewhere else, come up with something that makes some sense.
Well, we can put the mayors back up in here, since this is where we all.
Yeah, I have a lot of attention to the mayors, yeah.
Yeah. Really?
We'll come up with something that makes some sense. Uh, other comments? Ms., Ms. He?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and all the officials, the councilwoman, the councilman, and all the Smith and the public board people work really hard, the last, uh, which event, um, doing you here, um, I know some of the work behind the scene that you guys, um, did for the citizen, and I would truly appreciate it from my heart.
Chief, our next blood drive is next Wednesday at the tourist center from 10 to 3, which do have slots available, sign up, so, come on, lay your arm out, give us some blood, it's a really critical shortage right now, one of the lowest blood supplies our country's ever had, so it's really critical right now.
Other comments?
Chief, I can't give blood, I got mad cow disease. Mayor, council, my concern is that final stretch of sidewalk in Lake Harton, right in front of my subdivision, you know, what's the status of that? I've been beating up these sidewalks for about seven, eight years now, and, uh, I'm grateful for what's there, but that final stretch, also, you talked about the land bank, uh, that retention pond in front of our subdivision, uh, isn't that included in the land bank?
I, I, the one that we're talking about tonight does not have that particular parcel in it, um, it's, uh, the, the stuff we're talking about's a little older than that, I know that sounds odd, but it's, uh, mostly remnant pieces on the back of Duffy, um, and there's a couple others, I'm not saying it's not coming, I'm just saying that at this point, I, I don't have that in the, the ones that I'll talk about tonight.
Well, if you could speak to the sidewalks, it would be nice for me to get some grass out there for after 12 years.
Totally agree with that, that property just wanted to just keeps on here, um, but it's, uh, it takes some, um, Ms. Jill?
Mr. Mayor, when I moved tomorrow, 27, 28 years ago, North Ridge was considered private property as far as the city was concerned, but recently the city has taken over the trash collection, is it still considered private property, or let it?
It, it is considered private property, trash collection has been a city service for probably longer than that, um, I think it's been kind of quietly ignored is probably a good word, and at this point, we're trying to bring it into the fold in a way that's appropriate for both North Ridge as well as the city. I think we had a pretty good discussion, uh, with the HOA board, um, that there might be some solutions that make sense for everyone, um, and the idea was to have the city do a little homework, show them what we had in mind, and for the people that were on the call on that day, everyone agreed that this would be at least worth having a discussion about, so let's, let's, let's do that part first, and see if we actually can get to where we need to go, um, I think it's possible, um, but this would then solve it kind of once and for all.
Thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none, uh, comments from the city council?
No comments, uh, other than, Luminery was fantastic, thank you to, uh, to the Hops, uh, always standing in the gap, uh, and again, I will always speak to diversity in the City of Mar, we always have to, uh, be, we always have to mean it, mean what we say, and not diversity just because it's a word that you like to throw around, we have to show up for each other, and embrace cultural differences, and, uh, we're one community built upon neighbors knowing neighbors, so I always appreciate those events.
Ms. Knight? Ms. Trent?
Yes, thank you for all the staff, to the staff to make all the event happen. And just reminding that we are having the Black History Month celebration by the end of this month, and it's required registration. So please reserve your spot. And happy belated birthday to Ms. Eloise Bell.
Ms. Qua?
Yes, I have, I have the moment to say thank to everybody who came to join me to celebrate the Lunar New Year with us over the weekend. Thank you to the city for hosting a great event. It was a great event. I think that need to improve overall as a great event. And thank you to staff, whoever, and the volunteer. Everybody can help to make this, to make this great event happen. And that means a lot to our city. Thank you again.
Ms. Dean?
Yes. Happy birthday. And I also would like to say to the staff, as usual, you rock. You rock.
Excellent. I'm surprised I'm the one mentioning this, but the, this is Clayton State University Homecoming Week. So we need to show some support. You know, we talked a game about working with Clayton State University. We now have a work to our dedication that will be out there, I believe, on Thursday at 10 o'clock.
1:30. 1:30.
So there'll be a dedication, well, we can see website, it's all in there. And Friday night, the university has its Hall of Fame. And basically, we'll give out some proclamations to the 2011 women's basketball team, which is all being inducted to the Clayton State Hall of Fame. And then a kind of a rarity, you don't see this in Ma very often. The parade route was listed this morning. We will start at Ma Baptist Church and we will do a parade for homecoming on Saturday. And I believe that will start at 10 o'clock. And it will go up Lake Harden, down Lee Street, and go on a 54 highway at Ma. It'll go over around Ma Station, you know, the area that we have food trucks in. That'll be a tailgating opportunity, as well as just a viewing area, and then ultimately on Clayton State Campus. And then later that afternoon, you will see Lady Lakers and the guys and girls basketball teams. And five, one plays at 5, three plays at five. So let's pack the house up, but show them some appreciation. And we should ask them for it. And their team's actually pretty good, so there's a chance for them to play. Let's hope they're playing somebody who's just really awful. So we want to make sure. The one we're playing?
No, our team.
That's, that's the Lakers.
Lady.
Lady Lakers. Well, what do you say, what do you say? Well, what's the, Lady Lakers is one, what's the others? Just the guys?
They're just the Lakers.
Just the Lakers. Don't look for me to be the person who can quickly correct that guy because I just know it was playing basketball, guys. But I didn't know they were crushing the other night, so.
By 20 points.
So, and we should have the mascots out there. This would be a good opportunity for them to show that. We're going to go into executive session. We're going to go into executive session to discuss further property matters. Right here, second. Most of you have a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua? Ms. Knight? And Ms. Trent? And we need to move on.